How stupid of me. I didn't know that was 50. I was going out from the city where it's 50. He said to me, he said it's 65 now farther. It's the first thing he said to me. He said, he said, uh, he said you thought this was 65, didn't you? They'll give me the ticket.
I was worried about that. I went and picked my card up.
Oh, yeah.
Registered. I did the shirts and all that, but I left the registration stick. You know how they date them?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If mine expired.
It's not good.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, we're done.
Filing of this.
Yeah. Well, it's the same with me. When, when I picked my plate up on Wednesday night, I have to re-register. So they give me a new sticker. I take the insurance off.
I thought I heard.
Well, they stole my plate. They stole my plates. It was 611, 611 came off and 336 just went back on, so.
But that's, um...
Almost 300 bucks.
What do you got for carpool?
I just got a little.
Oh, Z4, okay. Oh, pick carpool. Or has it had a... Oh, God, no.
No, they're nice cars.
Yep, definitely. Definitely.
But it's not, it's not gonna race, Mr. Schu.
No, no.
No, God, no.
I was only doing 72. Nice car. That's a woman's car, too. Oops.
Ooh. Is that a GT?
No, no, six cylinder. Yeah. Yeah, it, uh, I gave it to her for her birthday in '02. And it's got 12,000 miles on it.
My wife, my wife's had a 69 Mustang when she was younger, kid. She regrets getting rid of it. We have to trade things in.
Oh, yeah.
Um, my son's got a 65 that he's put so much.
Oh, it, um, you know, Jen D'Amico used to work here. She was a secretary at the high school and then she was here for a while. Her husband Sam D'Amico owns Syracuse, Syracuse properties.
Oh, okay.
Okay. She, her, her father gave her mother a 64 and a half. Six cylinder, when it was brand new, 64 and a half. And it was like real, it was like a steel blue color, you know?
Oh, yes, yes.
Remember that color then? Yeah. Get to work.
Okay, well, pledge allegiance to the flag. Going to request a moment of silence for Donna Clary, a 1978 graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. James A. Lamica, Jr., a retired teacher and administrator from the North Syracuse Central School District. John Deja Brown-Win, who attended schools in the North Syracuse Central School. Thank you. Our presentation tonight is on behalf of the North Syracuse Education Foundation, the grant winners. Is Ms. Forte and the rest of your board? Yeah, you're, you're on. This is exciting. I, I like seeing familiar names, too.
There'd be light.
Right, but she's wondering if she has...
Can I take it off of here? Okay. Yes, thank you. Just got out of our board meeting. Here, I'm gonna give this to you, Mr. Keegan. Okay. Hello, everybody. Thanks for having us back. My name is Jackie Forte. I'm the president of the North Syracuse Education Foundation. And for anybody who doesn't know what we do, our mission is to enhance the education of the students in the North Syracuse School District from grades pre-K through 12. We are an all-volunteer organization. You can check us out on Facebook or at nscfweb.org. And before we get started with our grant presentation, I just wanted to say, please save the date on your calendars for our annual dinner gala, which is gonna be our one big fundraiser this year. It's November 5th. Our theme is celebrating the past, present, and future. It's our 10th gala. And this year, we're honoring four people from the community, which we do every year. We're gonna be honoring Vincent Hollipeter, if you know him, Teresa Jackson, who's an alumni and a community volunteer, Tom Tatham, our former athletic director, and Jim Stoddard, Jr., from Hayler-Fryer &amp; Co., who's been a huge supporter of the Education Foundation. Some of the things that we funded through the Education Foundation, if you're not familiar with what we do, is we funded several clubs and activities that have been taken out of the regular programming due to budget cuts in the past. So we funded the CNS Science Olympiad, the North Syracuse Junior High Science Olympiad, CNS Math League, the CNS Drum Line, the Cadet Winter Guard, the FCC LA Gillette and Roxborough Middle School, the North Syracuse Junior High Jazz Band, CNS Girls JV Tennis, and North Syracuse Junior High School DECA. We've done that for the past two years, where we funded one-third of the cost of those programs and the clubs have raised the other two-thirds of the money, and it looks like we may be doing that again this coming year. We also have put a special grant together this year where we're gonna be buying some lights for Roxborough Road Auditorium. We sponsor a lot of community groups into the auditoriums to use our facilities, and for that, they make a donation back to the foundation. So we're gonna be doing some improvements to some of the facilities that we utilize on a regular basis. We also have done a special grant for the high school science program last year, and we just approved at our board meeting tonight the funding of 15 district students to attend the summer robotics camp that's gonna be going on in the district this summer. And hopefully, that's gonna be for kids from the elementary, middle, and high school levels. But we wanted to, Superintendent's speech wanted to make sure that kids from our district didn't have to bear any cost if they participated in that. So she came to the foundation through John Rice and asked if we would help with that. So we approved that this evening. We also do Dollars for Scholars scholarships each year. We've done four each year for the past several years in coordination with the honorees from our gala. We sponsor the after-the-ball party, and we do a lot of different things throughout the district. So we also do our grants. Every year, we ask that staff members, teachers, teaching assistants, can be school counselors or anyone who works in the district, who works with children in some way, to apply for a grant. We don't limit the amount of money that you can spend when you ask for your grant, and we don't prioritize your program over anyone else's program. If you're a program in the district, whether you be math, science, art, music, whatever is out there, you're seen as equal in our eyes. This year, to date, we, I should say, we funded over $90,000 worth of grants for the district with this year's grants being added in. So it's a big deal to us. We received about $33,000 in grant applications this year, and we were able to fund $14,000 of that 33,000. And we have 12 grants that were funded. And we're here tonight to announce those grants and to award those grant winners. So first, I would like to ask anybody from our board and our volunteers who'd like to come up here with me and shake hands with the grant winners to come on up. And Carolyn Gross is our secretary. She's gonna help me. So we have certificates for everyone. So we're gonna be calling your name, and then Carolyn is gonna be telling everybody a little bit about your grant. And I can tell you that, again, these go across the district to all different grade levels. And this year, I have to say, the high school actually won five of the grants. They're blinded. We don't know the teacher. We do know the level that the grant is gonna be used on. We usually know the subject area, but we don't know the teacher. So it is possible for a teacher to win multiple grants in the same year, and you're gonna see that tonight. So our first grant winner is gonna be, actually, three teachers, or teacher assistants, Wendy Tracy, Jen Thayer, and Jill Trubia for Language Building Blocks in a Box. Come on up. Now, this grant is from Main Street. It's, uh, we are, they're, they're gonna, we're gonna be purchasing portable language kits that can be utilized in small groups to promote language skills in the classroom and therapy. Yes, Main Street did do well this year. Congratulations. Oh, our next grant winner, who is not here this evening because she is attending class at Lemoine, making herself an even greater teacher and asset to the district, is Kate Lane. And she won a grant called Big Technology for the District's Smallest Learners. And this is a grant that's come through the foundation, I believe, three times. And so this year, you made it. So persistence pays off. And someone wanna come up and accept Kate? So you have Kate's certificate?
So we're, they're, but we're gonna be purchasing, purchasing a smartboard for Main Street. They do not have any there. And now that the, they're gonna be wired this summer for that technology, then we are, can now purchase that for them, so.
And the funding for the wired services came through the technology grant, so we were able to kind of piggyback off of that, which is cool. Our next grant winner, and she's actually winning two grants, is Susan Nguyen. And she has the We Read and the Can You Hear Me Now grants. She's not here this evening, so you just wanna tell a little bit about her grant?
Okay, Can You Hear Me Now is, uh, we, they're purchased, we're purchasing whisper phones so that students can read to themselves and hear what they sound like. And, you know, they'll be able to know whether they're reading it like it should be read. And the second one is We Read, which is, we're gonna provide books for independent and instructional level to take home to read with family member. No, this is for Roxborough Elementary. So the books go home on a take, on a home contract, and then they're returned and another one is chosen. So this is the, she, she has wanted this really bad for the last couple.
The next grant is for Lake Shore Road, Terri Persons and Sue Ryan. And this is also a bagged books to build comprehension.
Right. Now, the bagged books are, we're gonna purchase multiple sets of books, which will be for the second grade students, Terri and... And, um, so the, all of the student, all of the second grade students in Smith Road, no, Lake Shore, I'm sorry, Lake Shore will be able to be using these new books. So this is six multiple sets. Congratulations.
It's fun to stand up here and see some of my kids' former teachers. Wouldn't have done it without you. They're all doing well. Okay, our next grant is Lindsay Marzullo. And Lindsay's here. This is Smith Road, and this is the Osmo Educational Hands-on Gaming System for iPads.
Now, okay, this system is a gaming system that you use. They have iPads in the kindergarten classroom, and it uses physical objects and learning tools in conjunction with the iPad, and it fosters learning in key, key areas like social, emotional, creative thinking, STEM, and Common Core.
Okay, and now we're jumping up to the ones in the high school. The first one is Mary Murdock, Connected Classroom, A 21st Century Approach. This was a big one.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. We're, we're purchasing four mini tablets and accessories for, for creating an interactive hands-on learning center to hear, view, and manipulate authentic Spanish materials.
Okay, and then next on our list is Paul Chapin. Is he in there? Okay. Well, you know what? I skipped, I gotta go back at one. I skipped one. Paul, Science-Tech-Negation, which is kind of a continuation of the grant we did last year.
Right. We're gonna purchase 10 Dragon Touch Octa Core Tablets, whatever, which will be used in implementing laboratory experiences supplemented with computer-aided scientific measurement probe ware with tablet interfaces. Got that?
Okay, we gotta go back to Smith Road, Roxborough Road for Carrie Del Tachetto. She asked for a counseling book library, and so that's what we're funding.
All right, now that library is for both. Well, we're doing, she's doing a counseling. It's a book, um...
It's a library of professional resources. If we, we, we actually, this year, because of Common Core and the 21st Century Learning, we know all the buzzwords that you guys are having to contend with these days. Very often, what you're missing is the proper tools to put together the lessons and the structure the way that you need to. And with the counseling, very often, too, you're missing the things that you need to just make your lessons up. So we also do sometimes have grants where we approve those.
Therapy through reading book program on different kinds, different kinds of situations, so.
So we approve that. And I've been in your room. It's awesome in there. I love your little, the stuff we did last year with the kitchens and the sandboxes is amazing. The next one is Sarah Bambino. Sarah has getting two grants this year. One is the Kinesthetic Theater through A Raisin in the Sun, and the other is a similar library, building a Common Core library.
So the Kinesthetic Theater, we'll, we'll be purchasing materials for the students to use to experience the play, A Raisin in the Sun. They'll use props and act out the play, and this will help with, with their mini lesson, do it in mini lessons so that they can, it'll help with the regents for the 11th grade. And she's the Common Core. They're, with, in conjunction with the English department, they're gonna begin a small professional library of resources to develop lesson plans that reach higher-level skills while being purposeful and engaging students.
On our foundation board now, we have seven student reps. We used to have just two. And what we found this year was with them participating in the grant selection process, it was really enlightening because they had a lot of opinions about how things work in the classroom and what will work well for them and what they like and what they don't. So they definitely liked the idea of being able to act out this book, and they thought it would help them a lot with some of the essays that they have to write. They liked it a lot. And then we had Shirley, is it Neumeister? Neumeister. She had the Real World Forensics. All right. They have, um, we're gonna purchase materials to enhance and enrich the forensic curriculum that's already established at the high school, and it'll be able to stay current with the latest advancement in the forensic field. And the interesting thing about that grant, too, was there was a lot of discussion amongst the students about that one as well because this is an elective that's already happening at the high school. So we were like, why do you need a grant for this if it's already happening? Well, what we didn't really realize is that the materials that they consume every year are not always replenished. So the course will be fully what it is supposed to be because they will have all of the materials that they need to have to do all of the things that they would like to do. And that's really the kind of thing that the foundation is here to do. So with that, thank you to everyone who applied. And we're really excited to see your pictures and get your feedback. All your feedback will be due to us next year around this time because even though you can get your stuff and start using it right now, your grant is officially for next school year. So thank you. You've done a great job.
Jackie, wait, before you give up the mic, could you introduce the board members just so we can thank them for their continued support?
We have a student rep, one of our student reps, Jeremiah Butler.
I'm sorry, Sandy, I know that you don't like that.
And Jan Gilkey, who you guys probably know, who's recently recovering from surgery. So she's out today walking for the first time. Nat Ordway, who's our treasurer and past president. Carolyn Gross, our secretary, Sandy DiBianco, board member, and Casey Toms, who's our senior graduating student rep. And then we also have some people in the back. Rochelle Leonard, who's a volunteer parent. And we have Sophie Corilla, who's one of our students. And then Gee, I'm not gonna remember your last name. Marola. Gee is new. And you guys are in what grade now? Eighth grade, so we're catching them young now and bringing them on up. And then we also have, missing from our board tonight, our vice president, Sharon Furman. She's taking her last final. And Mike B. Calo. And am I missing anybody else? One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay. And there are only seven of us officially on the board. None of us who have kids left in this district. So if you know of anybody who'd like to get involved and who would be passionate about education, please point them our way. We're open to anybody and everybody who's willing to help.
We're going to move into the comment section from the audience. Ms. Shock. Just get you to use the microphone.
Right here, okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I would like to take a moment to thank the board for giving us and others time to express our concerns. Our concern tonight is the board will be voting to adapt the budget for the coming school year. As much as I know, there have been hours and hours of thoughts and planning put into this budget. But I would be remiss, being the president of the North Syracuse Teaching Assistance Association, if I did not point out the four retiree positions that are not being filled as a reduction through attrition. Everybody knows it's the same as a layoff. I take objection to the fact that the board mentioned last meeting that no one was being laid off. Reduction of four teaching assistants is a layoff, in other words. These positions were tenured people working as full-time positions with our children. These four positions, now added to our already 50-plus positions that we have lost, adds to our growing concern of where this is all growing for our hard work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Into board committee reports or comments, Ms. Scanlon. I see we have quite a few policies up tonight.
We do. The policy committee met last Tuesday on April 12th. We reviewed nine policies. One was recommended for readoption. Five were amended and recommended readoption. Two were tabled for further discussion, and one is a new policy up for second reading, and this will be for final approval. And our next meeting is May 9th.
Cash, do you have anything for legislators?
Yes, we had our last meeting April 13th at 5:30. We are discussing for next year the tax cap implications and the new equitable foundation aid formula. So we would like to tackle those for next year. And our next meeting is going to be June 9th. We're skipping May to get into June.
Any other comments?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. President. I'm on the Community Learning Professionals, and just thought it was worth reporting they've been working, or we've been working, a lot in the last several months to prepare for the March 24th, which was last month, Professional Development Day. Today, we met and reviewed this survey, so I thought it was worth reporting that, first of all, the largest number, it was my understanding of people responding to the survey, was seen this year. And there seemed to be a lot of excitement with the type of menu of opportunities that was put, that were put out for professional development. What, under the facilitative leadership of Alicia Pizzuto, what the committee did was survey teachers amongst ourselves, you know, the teaching staff, and look for people or solicited people who were interested in sharing what they had been doing in their classrooms and the different things that they've been working on. One thing that did show up on and on and on, over and over, was the PLC piece, which you were all familiar with here, that a lot of the opportunities involved PLC. So just, the, the committee met today, and I just wanted to relay that there seemed to be a real positive energy that came out of that, that in-house, we have a lot of people that are willing to collaborate with colleagues, and they received a lot of what they felt was useful information in reading the surveys that they could take right from that workshop and implement when they went right back to the classroom the next day. So I thought, again, that was worth sharing because that is a big step, is my understanding, I'm my first year on the committee, and starting to look at doing professional development in this way.
Thank you. Anybody else? About Festival of the Arts. Anybody have the opportunity to go to that this weekend? I did by about five minutes. I was in Morrisville with my daughter, who had something in the festival, but I hear from the other half of the family that went. And thank you, John. Your wife took a picture of them in front of the artwork that we were not able to see. I hear that it was, as per usual, the great event that it is, so. And I, and I recognize that it's quite a few hours that go into setting up and probably a few hours taking down, but still more than, than a regular Saturday would hold for, for people. I appreciate that. Thank you. Miss Speech?
Just a couple of things. Yes, I was gonna comment on the Festival of the Arts. It was well-attended and quite an exciting event as usual. I particularly liked the fact that it was a nice day and the jazz ensemble was singing outside the front entrance, welcoming people. Such this year. So thank you to all the staff. I know it's numerous hours and hours that go into putting that together. I am officially going to make the statement that we only used two of five snow days this year. We're past that magic date of April 15th, which tells us what's gonna happen if we have extra snow days left. And so we will be sending out a notice soon to indicate that we will be closing the district down on Friday, May 27th. So staff and students and families will all have a wonderful four-day memorial weekend. Just a couple of comments about the surveys. The community survey, you know, we presented very summary-type results recently. It has generated more data than we really knew what to do with, and so we're still combing through that. And shortly, we will be providing building principles with building-level results, and then we will be posting all of that online, and, and we'll publicize that, so people will be able to take a look at that at their leisure. And one last thing about surveys. My student council, Superintendent Student Advisory Council, the students this year made their project developing a student survey which parallels the community survey. And Jeremiah Butler, and who was here tonight with the foundation, he and Sarah Wicks are presidents of that group. They've done a phenomenal job putting together a survey that will be given to middle school, junior high, and high school students during the month of May. And I look forward to us having the results. The students from that group will be coming to a future board meeting to present that information to all of them.
So we'll move into our routine action items, A, B, C, and D. Do we need any clarification or questions answered on any one of those? We have a group. Ms. Cash, Ms. Scanlon? All in favor? The resolution to extend the nominating deadline for board candidates to authorize the corresponding revision to the legal notice. Connie, can you, just so people know why we're doing that, could you do, could you give a brief explanation again, please?
Yes. Education law states that if you have a candidate that withdraws a petition 14 days before the due date, you have to extend it by that many days. We had one person who withdrew a petition on Monday, April 4th, which meant that we had to extend it one more day. So the actual deadline for board nominating petitions is tomorrow night at 5 o'clock. So we had to do this resolution, which will also amend our legal notice so that we can get that published.
Thank you. Thank you. We, do we have a motion to accept A? Ms. Cash, Mr. Leon, all in favor? That's unanimous. The formal adoption of the budget is a roll call.
If the board will bear with me, we'll just walk through. Most of the information that I'm presenting tonight is identical to our last presentation, so I'll move through this quickly and just share with you the highlights of the budget. Genda items are state aid, the tax levy, some staff changes and other implications of our revenue situation this year. We'll look at our revenue expense and expense summary, and we'll talk about our vehicle bond proposition, touch base in fund balance and reserves, and then just recap with voter and election information, as well as the budget process timeline. You've seen this chart before, and there's a lot of numbers on here. And I think if I was going to focus on two things, the first would be, once again, after six miserable years of the GEA, we're finally done with it. And so we picked up this year $1.9 million of additional aid that thankfully is not being subtracted from our state aid. And you see that blue number, 1.9, or $1,009,18, there as a big contributor to our stated increase. We did get a $423,000 increase in foundation aid. I'll talk in a minute about why that is a disappointing increase. And then finally, just mention to folks that we watch our transportation aid very closely. Our aid is based on actual spending, and that number is highlighted just because the number we're using is not the number published by New York State, but the number that is most closely correlates to what we'll actually receive. But to recap, we're going to get about $68.2 million in state aid next year, which is about a 3.5% increase, which is great. This slide shows foundation aid, and it shows it from 2007, '08 to 2015, '16, and the time period is significant because the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuits settled in 2006, and the legislature came up with a funding mechanism where the majority of school aid would come to schools in the form of foundation aid. Unfortunately, the state didn't have enough money to pay that aid, and they decided they'd phase it in over a five-year period. Well, as we all remember, the economy hit the skids, and they weren't able to actually fully fund foundation aid. So this is a major reason why we've been struggling with our school finances. And just to bring your attention to the 15, '16 foundation aid, that's the last line on the slide, that's the current school year we're in, it's almost $9.4 million less than the lawsuit, the campaign for fiscal equity lawsuits said North Syracuse should get in order to provide a sound, basic education. So as Liz mentioned, in connection with the legislative committee, this will be a big push for us next year. But I'd be remiss in talking about state aid if I didn't mention that. Foundation aid is a big challenge for us as we try to balance our budget. Moving on to the tax cap, this formula hasn't changed since its implementation. And again, is another challenge for us, but in following the state formula and using the inflation rate, which was that number called the allowable levy growth factor, as everybody knows, the tax levy can increase by either 2% or inflation, whichever is less. And in this year, past year, we had a very low inflation rate. There are some other factors around capital projects and pilot agreements and whatnot, but at the end of the day, following the state formula, staying within the tax cap, only requiring a simple majority, our tax levy will increase $890,665, or about 1.09%. And the impact on a home of $100,000 before star is $25.30. And that's what this chart basically indicates, is the tax rate for our three towns. It's important to note that two of our towns, Cicero and Salina, are full-value towns. The assessments equal the full value. Clay is a partial-value town, and that's why that rate there is a little higher for the town of Clay. You see, it's $545.55 for $1,000 of assessed value. But at the end of the day, everybody pays, you know, when they equalize those rates to full value, everybody, $400,000 home in all three towns will pay the same amount, and the increase is about $25, or about $2 a month, again, before star. This chart is one we've shown for years, and I think we would be remiss if we didn't include it in our budget discussion. For so many years, the burden of funding public education has shifted to the local taxpayer. That has leveled off. The bold numbers, the last four years, we've seen it kind of level off and start to decline in terms of the local tax levy. And that's how some state aid has been increased, most significantly this year. But at the end of the day, state aid represents about 43.5% of our total revenues, and the local tax levy represents 53.3% of our total revenues. And the majority of the burden is funded by the local taxpayer. So let's talk about this. So now we've looked at revenues in terms of our tax levy and our state aid, and these are the staffing changes that are included in this budget proposal. Teaching assistant retirements, there are four of those. And additional secondary teachers were for all the various sections. And when I say secondary, I'm talking about Gillette Road, Roxborough Road, the two middle schools, the junior high and high school. So those four buildings. At the end of the day, with all the movement of students, there's only a .8 increase required to properly staff those schools, consistent with prior practices. The additional social worker, we've talked about that for years now, and this budget includes the addition of one full-time social worker. Additional special ed teachers, we've gone through the special ed study, and it's recommended that the flip side of the four teaching assistant retirements is that we need to add two additional special ed teachers. The elementary positions, again, due to enrollment, there's a reduction of two positions there. The related specials, that's music and art and PE, net to about a .8 reduction. And then we're going to add two consultant teachers for the evaluation and support of our newest teachers. And those are the new, the staffing changes and the impact of this budget. Other implications, though, that are important to note, we're going to continue the two teachers on special assignment that are working in instructional technology. We're going to continue the one teacher on special assignment that's working as an instructional coach for writing. Although it nets down to, I believe, one net reduction in a position, there's no layoffs involved in this budget. There's no reductions in student programs either for, you know, that while there's many things we would like to have added, this revenue picture doesn't allow us to restore critical programs and positions cut from the recent budgets, and those range everywhere from instructional, support services, administration, co-curricular, and athletics. So kind of just summarizing, again, you can see on this chart the total revenue picture. It's all about the tax levy and state aid in terms of revenues. We do have some other revenues, but the majority of those revenues come from those two sources. You can see on this chart just another view of our revenues, but to point out the possible tax levy, subject to voter approval, that second-to-last line there. Total revenue increase of 2.9% or 4.0, almost $4.4 million. On the expenditure side, we're a people-based business. The majority of our expenses are people. We have a lot of debt. Our debt service is about $10.6 million, about 7% of our budget. We rely heavily on BOCs. We spent about $14 million with BOCs. And we have in our budget some money to replace equipment. As the board well knows, over the years, we've squeezed things pretty hard, and over the last two years, we've tried to replace some of the oldest equipment here in the district. Just another view of those expenditures, again, less than 3% increase in total expenditures. Couple of highlights that are worth mentioning. Our bargaining units, led by our teachers, were very supportive of moving our health insurance this year from one third-party administrator to another with a better network, which we believe is going to allow us to mitigate some of the increased costs of health benefits. And so we've budgeted that potential cost avoidance into this budget. Retirement costs, we're thankful that both ERS and TRS costs are down. That's been factored into the budget as well. Salaries and wages, it's important to note, I know the board knows this very well, that our employees have gotten less than a 1% increase in wages for the three-year period ended June of 2015. This contract considers settled contracts, about a 3% increase on average for the '16, '17 school year. We were fortunate that we were able to factor in fuel and energy cost savings into the budget, and we continue to evaluate opportunities to work closely with BOCs. Our per-pupil expenditures remain in the same position they've been in for many years. We're second-to-last in the BOCs, the OCM BOCs of 23-component school districts. That means we spend less per pupil than most districts in our BOCs. We're ranked in the state out of 669 schools, 652. And that's simply a function of our revenues. You spend what you make, and we spend less because we bring in less revenues than our counterparts. Budget history, just to give a sense of looking at the far-right column, we've been fortunate to have some increases in state aid the last few years that have helped, but our revenues have been limited on the tax levy side by the tax cap. Overall spending has been held in check, again, less than 3% this year. Every year, the district purchases vehicles. This year's no different. It's important that we keep our bus fleet safe and mechanically reliable. We're proposing that we purchase 10 65-passenger diesel school buses and two special-needs buses, 142-passenger and 148-passenger bus, that will allow us to keep the average age of our fleet, or should say, will limit, mitigate the number of buses over 10 years old, which becomes mechanically challenging. We'll buy another Suburban to replace one of our older Suburbans, and a bucket loader that'll be used for snow removal and projects.
I just have one question.
Sure.
On the previous slide, at 2011, 2012, that was the projected number, the 5.1%.
What? That's such a, thank you. That's a good point. In other words, what does the tax levy actually end up being an increase?
Right.
So what ends up happening is, because of, everything is based on the assessed values that we have, and as most people know, we lock in those assessed values, the final assessments aren't done, the actual school tax bills won't be issued until August. And what we usually find, that the rate that we quote, the 1.09% increase, and the 20, if we go back to our rate here, the rate that we actually quote, the 2351, it actually ends up being less than we quote, due to the changing assessments.
The only reason why I remember that here specifically.
Shift in assessments, I think, in the town of Cicero.
Cicero was considerably lower than the 5%.
And I'll just remind people, we have nothing to do with assessments.
Right.
Every time, I break out a sweat every time I hear that word. So in any event, our total cost of these 14 new vehicles is about $1.1,566. And the tax impact after transportation aid is about $2.10 per year for a house of $100,000 before star. Fund balance, I wanted to show this slide again, just to remind people that we've been using about $750,000 worth of fund balance to subsidize the subsequent year's budget. So we'll take this year $950,000 out of our fund balance to subsidize the '16, '17 school year. That's an increase of $200,000. That's what we needed in order to balance the budget. And our reserves, you know, remain amongst the lowest in the area, but we've got reserves for some of our key liabilities, and most notably, workman's comp and tax surcharge. You know, in summary, you know, we've got an increase in state aid, but albeit, we're disappointed in the foundation aid. The tax levy is in accordance with the tax cap formula, and it's going to be a challenge for us to sustain and maintain programs going forward as we comply with that formula, and we hope maybe through legislative efforts, we can get the formula changed next year. The budget includes total expenditures of $155.2 million, which is an increase of about 4.3 or 2.9%. And unfortunately, due to the state aid that we got and the tax levies, we were not able to restore critical programs and positions cut since the Great Recession. And that's pretty much the summary. The vote, Tuesday, May 17th, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., the same polling places as we've had in the past, at Cicero L. and the administrative building here. We just encourage people that are not registered, that you can register here at the district's office, Monday to Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., until May 12th. And we'll be running a special registration event on May 3rd at both Cicero L. and the district office. And anybody that has questions about registration can contact our district clerk, Connie Gibson. So tonight, hopefully, the board will adopt this budget proposal, and we'll also talk about the BOCs election and budget vote. The next major item on our calendar is the budget hearing on May 3rd and the budget vote on the 17th. Any questions or comments?
Can I just, one quick, on the revenue slide, the pilots, maybe you mentioned this and I missed it.
Yeah.
The decrease in pilots, is that due to some sunsetting, or did people just?
That's exactly what it is. You know, we add one, subtract one.
We're in the tax role now.
Yes, exactly. So when you see them go down, that typically means that someone's, you know, pilot is over, and they've come into the tax role, but there's new pilots that come on, so. And our attorneys do a good job of analyzing those fours and letting us know what our obligations are, what our revenue expectations should be under those pilot agreements. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion for the formal adoption of the budget. Mary, Ms. Cash has a second. Okay, so we'll do a roll call.
Andrew Savona.
Yes.
Tom Brogdon.
Yes.
Mike Chu.
Yes.
And Mike Leon.
Yes.
Yeah, I know. Sorry about.
Okay. So then we move, yes?
So I just want to thank Don for not only your presentation tonight, but all the work put into pulling this budget together, and a special thank you to the board members who've helped out on the board budget subcommittee. I think that's been valuable, and it helped to make this a smooth.
Move into the discussion action of the universal pre-kindergarten contract providers. There's really basically no changes with this, correct?
Several years ago, we went to five-year contracts, and the same two providers, Larnes You Grow and Northminster, were the two that we've selected. The grant money is still exactly the same. It's been frozen probably for the last seven to eight years. And the two providers that you see in the summertime doing their final presentations have done an excellent job. Don and myself go over periodically, and we're looking at their program, looking at making changes, updates. They recently adopted handwriting without tiers. We've helped them with the professional development, so we've been pleased with their service up to date.
Thank you. So do I have a motion? Shusta, Mr. Harrington? I'm going to the side of the table. I know that I've been heavy on the side.
Who waiting for? All right, I know.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, so, the election of the OCM BOCs Board of Education, do we have, this is not a roll call, correct? So, we have four vacancies, and we cast no more than four votes, so this is actually kind of an easy decision. But it is also, administrative budget is next, too. So, do I have a motion? I want to just very specifically state that Bob Crabtree is our representative on that committee. I do appreciate his continued service for that specific board. But do I have a motion to accept all four of those candidates? Mr. Farfalia, all in favor? Or second, Mr. Shusta, all in favor? That's unanimous. Now, the approval of the administrative budget. One of the things that I guess I never noticed is, this says to take effect immediately. So, does this mean that the vote itself, or?
Act for '16, '17.
Just because we're voting at different times, because there's different meetings. So, do I have a motion to approve the administrative budget for OCM BOCs? Harrington, all in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, we have a surplus of non-marketable equipment. Have a motion for that? Leone, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor of that? That's unanimous. And then, the contract between North Syracuse Education, or North Syracuse Central School District, and the CSEA. Maintenance and operations, do we have any need for explanation or anything on that? Do I have a motion? Ms. Cash, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Have to mention that that is contract number 12 that has been settled. As of right now, we have no open contracts, so, Don and Jason, for all your work on.
So, we have policies. So, that's H, I, J, K, L, M, and N. Do I have a motion? Ms. Scanlon, second. Ms. Cash, all in favor? That's unanimous. Do we need an executive session for Personnel A or B? I did notice that in the support staff, there was one retirement. I do not like to overlook those. There is Cindy Prue, who is an Account Clerk I in the Main Street School. I'd like to congratulate her on 27 years of service. Okay, and so, do I have a motion to take A and B? Mr. Leone, Ms. Cash, all in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, now, do I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations of the middle managers bargaining unit, to review the employment record of three individuals, and to receive an update on four legal matters relative to potential litigation with no actions to follow? Trying to allow Mr. Farfalia. Mr. Farfalia, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? That's unanimous. Participation in government students, we, anybody with a pen can sign for you.